...of May 23rd is now in session. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, PB 1815, Krieger subdivision, Griffin site plan, lot number two. Please come up, sign in, and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Lino Schreuder with the firm Montalban, O'Connell &amp; Frank, representing Stephen Griffin this evening with respect to site plan for lot two of the Krieger subdivision. Just by way of background, this is our first time tonight here with respect to lot two. We were here last year getting lot one approved, so we're back for the adjoining lot. Just by way of background, this evening I have the applicant himself, Mrs. Stephen Griffin, and in the audience, Mr. Phil Griffin, his dad. So hopefully that'll be it for this evening, but we'll just see. But this is for a single-family home on lot two. The Krieger subdivision, I believe, was subdivided about several years ago?
No, April of seventeen.
April of seventeen. So it was finalized on April 17th, and the first part of the project involved development of lot one. The unique part about this subdivision, when it was approved, I guess there was no stormwater done. There is a stormwater line which is referenced in the site plan. There's a 24-inch stormwater line that goes down the side of the property. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But other than that, we're proposing to build a single-family home on this site. I know there are some memos that we received with respect to the application. We'll be happy to discuss with you and any questions that you may have.
Have you gotten all the consultant's reports?
Yes, did receive them.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go through the consultant's reports and have a little bit discussed. Project review has no additional comments beyond those submitted by other agencies but private. Jane Slavin. Submission reviewed. Site plan was prepared by, I'm gonna ruin that, Paul G. D. of P.
Kedanski.
Kedanski, thank you. PE dated revised 4/27/18, and architectural plans were prepared by Robert Pony dated 3/5/2018. Number one, actual proposed height of the dwelling in relationship to the average proposed finished grade along each wall shall be indicated on all elevations per zoning charter 43, Article XI, Section 11.2. Floor area ratio is incorrect as the basement area needs to be included in the calculations per zoning charter 43, Article XI, Section 11.2. A variance will be needed for the floor area, and the applicant should consider ways to reduce the requested variance. Submission to ACABOR is required. If you have any comments while we're going through these, please.
I was gonna ask if that's okay. The only one comment I have on Ms. Slavin's memo is item number two, because I know with respect to the adjoining property, lot one, we had the same issue that came up, and I believe we buried the basement. They, with respect to, we brought in, put a retaining wall and actually buried the basement to get away from the FAR issue, because I believe your code, basements count towards FAR, but cellars do not.
Correct.
So can we take that same approach with respect to what we did on lot number one next door with respect to that structure?
Yes, and obviously would significantly impact the grading and area of the property, which is a pretty steep drop-off. And, you know, you have some situations to deal with with Bruce Peters' memos being east-sided of the dwelling, so regrading that area too will affect zoning discounts. It can't be done. And that's why also the elevations are critical. On the architect's plan, even though it doesn't necessarily affect the pending board reviews, right now the house is very tall on the property. So on the elevations in relationship to the grade, all of the height shows to be shown with the floor elevations.
Yeah, but the applicant client just informed me that we would be filling in basically to alleviate that, lot number two, for the FAR. I guess what's on the, on the left, on the left side of the plan, the left side of the home, when you're looking at the site plan, we're looking to fill that on the side in order to bury the basement.
Well, assume more than that. This house is more than 50%, half of it.
Right.
And it's around right now. So I'll have, I'll only, you know, assuming it's a reworkage of the elevation.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Bruce Peters. This department has the following comments. "The proposed house is only five feet at the northeast corner and only six feet at the southeast corner, away from the existing 24-inch storm drain line. This is unacceptable. The proposed home must be at least 15 feet from the storm drain lines at all points." "The existing, two, the existing storm drain outlet invert is listed as elevation 140.90. The proposed grading of 146 is only four feet north of the existing and proposed remain untouched 24-inch storm drain outlet. This means that the grade change is a little over five feet vertical and four feet horizontal. How is the five-foot grading supported to remain in place even if the retaining wall is designed? The drop elevation and the close location to the house makes this design unacceptable." "Three, a 15-foot wide permanent easement must be provided by the owner to the town highway department over the existing storm drain line and along the open ditch. The written easement with meets and bounds shall be submitted to this department and the town attorney's office for review and approval." "Four, note 15 of the drawing states that the perk test was done on the adjoining property. This is not sufficient for the design of the wet wells planned for this site. Perk tests must be performed on this property in the location of the proposed dry wells. The perk test shall be administered prior to receiving final approval for the site plan to ensure adequacy of the designed drainage system. The applicant's engineers shall provide a copy of the field perk test to this department and the building department." "Five, the drawings shall indicate approximately where the steel plate slash temporary bridge over the existing sanitary sewer might be utilized. Six, the proposed dry well overflow lines outlets, as well as the foot drain outlets, shall depict a riprap apron or another appropriate spread, level spreading. Energy dispersing device system. The invert elevations at the exhaust points shall also be given on the plans." "Seven, the drawing currently shows silt fence running around the existing drainage ditch. This may cause the ditch to break up and cause ponding on the lot and possible flood on the adjacent property during construction. The applicant's engineers shall show proper stream ditch crossing with ESC devices on the plan. Details for the same shall be added to the drawings. The diameter of the proposed roof drain piping, as well as the footing drain piping, shall be added to the plans. The invert elevation for the trench drainage piping and the roof drain piping shall be given at the outlets of the trench drain at the proposed house and the entrances into the dry wells." Okay, Booker Engineering. Booker has...
May we just comment on this memo, Mr. Chairman? It's okay. Just to make things easier, we, the applicant has agreed with respect to items number four through nine of the memo. We'll address those in the subsequent site plan submission, and we'll address those comments. Just with respect to numbers one, two, and three, and I'll take them one at a time. We had, we initially had this project on for the last month's meeting, and we decided to adjourn it because I guess with the comments that were going back and forth with Bruce and Mr. Kedanski, one of the comments was that initially, on the initial site plan, he had wanted us to move the house away from what's the existing 10-foot-wide sanitary sewer line. So we did that, and that's what's represented on the plan that's before you this evening. So we did shift the house away from the sanitary sewer. With respect to the 24-inch stormwater line, that line has been there. It was pre-existing. We didn't put it in. It was there as part of the subdivision. The only thing we have a little bit of an issue with is with respect to the distance. We're trying to avoid going to the zoning board for variances, and I understand we have the FAR, which we may have to go, and we're trying to avoid that. But I think just shifting the house further to, I guess, your left as you're looking on the site plan, if we're gonna move that house 15 feet away from that, the stormwater line, it's gonna require us ultimately to have to get a side yard variance, which we're trying to avoid. We're trying to get this as of right and have this house fitted on the site, again, without the need for variances. One of the things that we need to look at is with respect to the 15 feet. You know, I checked the code. I didn't see it with respect to the, to the distance requirement in the code from a storm line. So I just think our engineer and Bruce need to just work that out with respect to the distance we think it could be.
Is there something in the code on there?
There isn't.
There isn't, okay. So this is just something...
Correct.
Right, but if they have to, if they have to work on this line, and you're gonna do so to the house, you're undermining the foundation of the house now. That's the issue. That's, you know, the standard width that they asked for so that they can get in there. They have to replace the storm drain. And this storm drain, I do not believe, was actually part of the subdivision. This was acquired because the subdivision came in place because there was a problem with water in this area. And this one you told us before, sorry. And this is done because this area has been worked on.
Yeah, that, when the applicant purchased the lots, that line was already there with respect. And it's only, just so you know, it's, the line itself is only, with respect to the easement and the work, I understand that work has to be done. The town has to do it. But the, the line itself is only two feet, you know, under. So it's not that deep. And one of the thoughts with respect to the...
It's not necessarily that, it's a little bit. They need to have a certain size trench that's required by code.
Right. No, understood.
Again, they've worked that out with Bruce Peters, but that's the reason for it. My point was this was done prior to the subdivision.
Yes, it's existing.
By the way, how do you define, purchased it? That's what I'm trying to find out. This was FAR prior to the subdivision being purchased. It was not part of the subdivision, not proof.
That's correct.
Right, it's existing.
Correct.
These things you're gonna have to work out with Bruce because, you know, he knows exactly what he needs and everything else. If he decides you don't have to move it, that's, that's, you know, within his rules. But we very rarely go against any of our consultants.
Understood.
You work it out with them and, and come up with a, you know, an amiable decision.
Yeah, and we'll do that. I just wanted to let you all know, you know, with respect to conditions, we're okay with the majority of them. We just need to work out the distance. And even with respect to the, the permanent easement that the town is requesting with respect to the stormwater line, we have no issue with that. It's just maybe the way the easement may be mapped out, if it's gonna be 15 feet, maybe five feet on one side and maybe 10 feet on the other, just away from the line, which should be plenty of room. At least when I've done this in other jurisdictions, especially for a stormwater line this, this small, and with respect to the depth, it should work and has worked before. Again, in other jurisdictions where I've handled this. So again, we'll work it out with, with Bruce, and we'll definitely address it at the next meeting.
And I believe, because I'm looking at Booker Engineering, because they do our drainage consultants, they have, in fact, turned around and said that drainage can be mitigated. Okay, I was talking to Jane before, and they had not seen Bruce Peters' comments in request to moving the house or anything else. So I really, if you, we'll, we'll put these in, but I don't, I don't think that they're, they're gonna be accurate because the house may, if the house has to be moved, it has to all be recalculated. So, but I will read them in so that we have them. They have five comments, six, six comments. "As per our April 11th, 2018 report, an overflow shale shall be provided in the event of the catch basin in front of the house on Sunset Drive surcharges. As the street drainage system may only be designed to convey a 25-year storm, calculations must be provided to show the shale can convey a 20, oh, 100-year storm. Perk tests should be performed to verify the assumed percolation rate and the presence of groundwater. We recommend this be done prior to the building's issue. Revised the grading around the front of the house to show positive drainage away from the house. Remove the silt fence from the strain. Add silt fence at the limits of disturbances to prevent sediment from returning to the strain. Add the overall depth of the drywall to the drywall detail. Provide a drop curb detail to indicate the gutter flow on Sunrise Lane will not enter the new driveway." And again, their recommendation is sufficient detail and drainage calculations have been provided to demonstrate that the potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend the Kruger Estate Lot Two site plan application be approved for drainage to the above project. But again, like I said, I don't believe they have read Mr. Peters' comments. And once you get, I think, get that worked out in respect to the exact position of the house and whatever else he wants, I think then they'll, they'll reinvestigate the drainage and then, you know...
Well, they normally don't read his comments before, because they probably don't have them. When they're doing their thing, they don't have any comments from Bruce. That's standard on every application. It's not just, not just this one.
At this point, we don't.
So I mean, we have plenty others that have approved drainage, and they gotta try and work it out with Bruce.
But we've talked to the comments at this point, so they need to be addressed.
I mean, for the record, we love the Booker comments. We agree.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Mr. Mandell.
Yes, excuse me. Where is that stream now located? I don't see, I'm trying to find it on your site plan. Back to where there's that open stream.
What do we call this? It looks like a, maybe seven or eight ovals. Those are representing the stones surrounding the pond, or where, where the stream begins, rather.
That's where the stream is beginning?
Yeah.
Lower right-hand corner of the house.
Okay.
Oh, it's, correct.
And it's being piped, it's piped, that's where it opens up, the piping?
Correct.
Okay. Are you covering it over in any manner?
It's currently covered by, like, a little, it's called, it's called the existing footbridge on here.
Are you gonna, are you going to pipe this water? Are you gonna just leave this in open?
We'll leave it as is.
As is, all right. Now, you haven't performed the perk test yet, right?
Not yet.
So we don't know if those are gonna be the locations of the dry wells based upon, do you have a timetable yet for the perk test?
Before the, yeah, before the next...
Before the next meeting.
Now, I don't see a floor plan for the basement. Though you show on your site plan, on your rear elevation, I see one, two, three windows, French doors, stairway coming down. Is that, is that gonna be, or is this gonna all be covered up? Because you were talking about changing it to a cellar from a basement?
Would be unfinished.
Yeah, would be unfinished. So, and that's something we're gonna be looking into, again, to avoid the, the FAR variance if we can.
This is, what's the, what's the height of the basement gonna be? The interior height? That's up, the garage is up higher. It's not in the basement. Yeah, I wanna see more than finish it off. That's what I wanna see. Yeah, well, I'm looking here at their elevations, and they said they want to change it from basement to a cellar, so I wanna know.
It's eight, eight feet, eight feet plus, eight feet plus one foot for the joists.
It's whether it's a walkout or how many...
Yeah.
It's based on the relationship of the grade around the perimeter of the basement and the height of the basement. More than 50% of it has to be below grade. They can have a 12-foot ceiling. More than 50% of it has to be...
Be on the ground.
So 50% is below grade, then?
And whether or not it's finished, that, that becomes a building code issue. So they would have to meet Erest requirements for building. So there's a couple different zoning requirements and then every building requirements. A cellar can be habitable, but it has to meet certain building requirements.
Okay. Now, I'm just looking, the way it's coming out here in the back, it looks like it'll be a finished item. So you're saying you're gonna change it to a cellar? So you're gonna, you're changing the elevations or the...
Yeah, sure.
So as it stands right now, the entire front of the house would be covered. So we would just be covering the, the western part of the house to accomplish more than 50%.
And that's what we did, actually, next door in lot one, too. It's the same issue, if I recall.
So without the basement calculation, it meets the FAR?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like a, it seems like a relatively modest home today as well. You know, I mean, so it's not, you know, it's a pretty good-sized piece of property. Granted, it's all not buildable, but, you know.
And if you, if you've been to the site, if you're looking at lot one, the house is there now. It's, we're trying to make it identical in size, almost identical to the, to lot one.
Well, lot one had a house on it originally before they redid the new one. So that had nothing on it, so... All right, no further at this time. I reserve the right to ask further questions depending on how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Mr. Schwenning?
I wanna clear that cellar question again. 50% has to be covered. 50% of the perimeter, 50% of the height has to be covered.
Well, more than 50% of the perimeter and the height.
Because they can't just cover the west side. The south side is about, I think, 80, 10 feet, has to be at least halfway covered.
Correct.
So the doors come out, the stairway comes out, and all has to change. You can't just cover one side of the building.
Well, you can cover the outside.
No, you gotta cover every side halfway up.
No.
The front's covered. You cover each side.
This is, this is more a zoning issue, but it's, it's more than 50% of four walls.
Okay.
When you add everything together, it needs to be covered.
It's not half of each wall, that's what I was asking.
No, total of.
Total, the total.
That's why I also asked for the elevations to have dimensional information on each elevation. Right now they don't have it on the front.
God, that's why I was curious. We're looking at the elevations, and the front elevation says it's 25 foot 11 inch mean height. A little rule of work tells me that from the bottom of the garage door to the top of the peak is like 32 and a half feet, without any off-the-ground elevation.
But our code is the average.
Like I was saying, if the building is gonna be or if...
We don't have the maximum which I require.
Okay. And, you know, the back of the stone is over 40 feet.
Yeah, the, my calculations have it at 34 feet as the average mean in the rear.
Okay. Has it drawn out?
Correct. So the architect will have to provide new drawings demonstrating that they can perform, uh, revise the next step.
Right, that's what I was getting. Okay. I have any further questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
I see that comment from Peters. I mean, I've never seen that before in all the years I've been, been doing this. So I just think there's enough room on, on the side of the property to access it. I mean, to the south side, you got all, all the room in the world to get whatever equipment you need in there. It's only a two-foot pipe, and it's not very deep, so I don't really see it being that big of a, I don't see how it would undermine the foundation by, you know, they had to replace that pipe, you know, so. But obviously gotta work that out with him. I mean, you can't really shift, I mean, if you shift the house over anymore, I mean, it's not that wide to begin with, so.
Right, this is not the, get Bruce to sign on.
Yeah.
Say one more question?
Yeah.
Mr. Dell?
Yes, I have a number of questions about this. I concur with a lot of the things particularly Mr. Mandell was saying. On this case, one thing that definitely could be done, a minor alteration. On the west side, you're showing grading taking place right up to the property line. This board, for all the years I've been on, and all the other boards, tries to maintain a minimum of five feet for no disturbance from the property line. I think that's just a matter of re-drawing the 150-foot contour or whatever else you have to do to, to maintain that issue. Now, along the sides of the building, I think it'd be a perfect opportunity to possibly put in small retaining walls. And not only would it make it, make more sense visually, but the big thing it would do, of course, is get rid of that consideration with how much of it is actually exposed. Okay? Now, I agree with Mr. Peters about the pipe. I think that could be a real problem. It could actually, is it a concrete pipe, is it not? What is it, galvanized?
Uh, no, it's, yeah, it's like a hard pipe, PVC.
It's a PVC? That whole 24-inch pipe coming down? Okay, well, that's, that's one thing. I was worried about your basement possibly getting flooded. I think it is definitely too close. One obvious solution, you may not wanna take it initially, would be, could you possibly even move the pipe over? Then everyone would be happy.
They can't do this. It's town property.
Well, that's one thing that could be discussed. What? I'm talking to pipe that's next to the house. It's not on town property.
No, 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 the pipe belongs to the town, so they can't arbitrarily move it.
Not yet.
Not arbitrarily.
The town, it doesn't belong to the town just yet. The town is asking for an easement over it, but there currently is no easement over that pipe.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So there may be an option. Of course, you could talk this over with the town, but it sounds like it would solve a lot of problems if, when you get done with the expense of moving that pipe, particularly you're saying how shallow it is. It seems to me like a no-brainer to move it over, maybe the 10 feet, and then you might be able to get some of the other options that you're talking about. Now, this is obviously nothing I would put in as part of a decision or even propose it, but it's just looking at it and having been involved as a drainage contractor for some years, some time ago. Now, on the front elevation of the house, you're showing a, a window on the, up in the attic area. Is that an attic area, or what is that up there?
That's purely designed.
Okay, so there's no intention to make that living space?
No. That's correct.
Okay. It just seems the peak of the roof is a, a little high. You might be able to reduce that. Possi, I don't understand why. It's like this is the type of plan that you would usually see on a more of a flat, level lot rather than on this type of lot, and then it was just adapted. So when I'm in the back of the house, if you would have, let's say if you had that decorative window on the, on the, on the rear elevation, it would basically be almost a four-story house. I just think it's a little bit too much house, and I don't think this plan has much to do with this area. Now, I realize this in many ways is more ACABOR, but I just feel you're trying to force too much into this lot with what you have here in terms of the proposed house. I would not feel comfortable myself with moving it along at all at this time unless a lot of these things and these questions were answered. Of course, all the other members have their own opinions.
Can I just add one thing with respect to the house, just so the board understands? Lot two is actually larger than lot one, and the house that was put on lot one actually is, again, almost identical in size, if I'm not mistaken, to what we're proposing on our larger lot, lot two.
But does it have the same side grades? No, does it basically have what appears to be three stories in the rear?
Correct, they do. Yeah, both, both lots are almost identical.
The, the street elevations are the same. Actually, this, the street elevation in front of this was high on lot one.
What is this, above it?
Below it? Down on the bottom of the grade?
Yeah, yeah.
It's east, eastner, Sean.
Eastner.
Yeah.
Well, those are my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and then, just on the, just the, the drainage itself, I mean, we, the applicant has looked at, and initially the thought was to relocate this, but it really does become a cost issue at, at this point. So it was looked at, and I believe he even went to the town to apply for the permit, which... What a course diversion permit. And I think the last time anyone sought that was...
2001.
2001, from, from the town. Because we asked for the application, and they were kinda huddling in the back, and said the last time anybody's asked for that rediversion was 2001. Town board, yep. So again, it's, it really became a cost factor for us, just, and, you know, we, we like to leave it where it is as opposed to rerouting that, that line.
Sure. Your, your point about the grading, were you referring to the southwest corner of the property?
Well, I'm just referring to the east and west elevations. Okay, what, what, I made several comments on grading. One is the suggestion that you consider putting small retaining walls in there, which would certainly soften what's going on here, but could also possibly solve some of the other issues. With major terms, whether or not it comes, how much of it's covered. The specific comment had to do with the west elevation. We are actually grading right up to the property line, and there's no reason to do that because usually when, if you follow the plan, you're probably gonna be damaging some trees, et cetera, whatever else is on the neighbor's property. So just as a matter of courtesy...
Sure.
-usually you try to keep it five feet away, so then you're not destroying all the roots of anything that they might have to have.
So the, the southwest corner of the property, the way that we're doing that grading would be softening it from what it currently is. Because currently, the neighbor, Coletti, behind it, they have a fence up on the, the rear property boundary, and from there, it slopes off pretty dramatically. So we would be softening the grading back towards the house.
A little bit. They see just a question of how much you have to do. I'm particularly talking about just right off the, the house near the, the Crow property, now formerly Crow. You see that? The 1, look at the 150 contour.
That's on the west side.
The west side. You see that? How it touches the property line? Just bring it off the property line by five feet. That shouldn't be a problem. Otherwise, watching this is what happens. I know you're bringing back it to the grade, but it still looks a little problematic. I'm not quite sure how to accomplish.
No, but your idea, the, the thought, the retaining wall is a good one because, again, we incorporate that same method in the property next door. We had to put the retaining walls in order, in order to bury the, the basement so that-
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good idea and we're going to have to do that. And we are going to, if we're going to accomplish what we need to accomplish with respect to the basement, we will be putting up those retaining walls as you suggested along that side.
Right, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Bond, but in general, I, I just have trouble with where this at in terms of the design process. But, Mr. Bond, I'm sorry, please.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
I just have one question. You said when you were in reference, sorry.
Yeah.
In reference to the drainage conversation, you did move the house or the drainage? So it was five feet initially when that response was written, and you've moved it since?
No, originally, well, there's, there's the sewer, the sanitary sewer line, right.
Correct.
So that-
So the house and the relationship to the sanitary sewer line?
We moved, right. Based on discussions with-
What was the increment?
We didn't move it. We just resized the house.
Resized the house.
The original plan called for a bigger house, and we were going to relocate the drainage.
The drainage.
But in, in effort to stay away from the sewer line, we resized the house, but-
Okay.
-we are no longer willing to take on the cost of-
Doing the-
What is the current setback from the sewer line?
Uh, 14 feet.
I don't, I just don't have a-
14 feet.
No. Okay.
From the sanitary sewer.
Lower right corner.
No, I see it, I see it. Thank you.
Southeast corner.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Mr. Mandel?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Jane or Rick, do you have anything? Any addition? Okay. I'm going to open up to the public, but there's no, public here, so.
Personally, I, I, there's a lot that Mr. Peters is requesting and, you know, and also Jane. So what do you want to do with this? Because I, I think that he, they should answer these questions before we go any further with it.
I agree. What's, what's the downside if you gave preliminary?
Well, I think he mentioned there are many changes to the basement.
Right, we're going to, and it's going to affect the site plan because we're all going to try to cover, you know, the basement area. So it's going to be a revised plan in order to get that, so.
There's quite a large drop off at the back of the house. So in order to achieve the cellar definition, there's going to have to be significant grading, whether it's done by steps, retaining walls. So that all again affects-
Or you could just go for the variance, right? I mean, you could do that, Joe. I mean, just-
We'd like not to, but we're going to try.
I'm sure the ZBIR gives, but I haven't, I don't follow any decision that they make, but they have to give it.
Right, but again, the variance, in order to get it, really has to be something that's not self-created. In this case, they're building a new house on a virgin lot.
It's one of the criteria they have to look at. I mean, you know, the five factors. One is self-created. I mean, it doesn't deny the variance, but you look at that in terms of you balancing all the five factors to determine whether they're going to want to grant the variance. So we want to kind of avoid going to the zoning board if at all possible and kind of do the same thing that we did with the structure on Lot 1.
It sounds to me like the applicant has a couple of decisions to make. Well-
On, on new construction, that's self-created. I mean, look at a flat, look at a flat, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, yeah. But I'm saying, look at, look at a flat lot. That's a self-created.
Well, again, yeah, but we shouldn't relegate our duty here to come up with a proper site plan.
Everybody's talking at the time.
Okay. I just, I would say, I think the applicant has a bunch of decisions to make, and we really can't make our decision until we see what the plan looks like. There's going to be, maybe a possibly a totally new plan coming for us. So to give preliminary something that's going to change dramatically doesn't make any sense to me.
Then, what you're talking about is encompassing entirely the applicant. If they feel that's the gap they want to take, they can advise the board or they can decide if we can revisit it or not.
And, and just so we're all clear, I mean, in terms of what the applicant, what we're deciding to do, we're going to look to avoid the variance and, and come back with the site plan, showing the retaining walls and trying to get the, the basement, if you will, into the definition of cellar, so that we-
Yeah, like you, like you did on the other part.
Correct, exactly like we did on Lot 1. So that's what we're going to achieve and that's what we're going to do. So really, all I'm asking for tonight, we have some little bit of homework to do, just to address the comments with, with our engineer and the town's engineer. We'll get that addressed. All, what I'd like to ask tonight is just, I mean, this is a type 2 action to seek where if the board would be so inclined is to at least negdeck the project because it is type 2 as, for a single-family home. At least we can get that done this evening. That would be helpful.
I don't know what, does the board want to do that?
Should we not continue?
You're going to continue, but we're just asking for-
No, no, I, I don't think we could do that, you know? Give them a negdeck and then, then-
Because you might change, be changing, you might sit down and work out with Bruce Peters where you're going to change everything around. So we're going to approve one thing, and that's not what you're bringing back. So I think we could hold, should hold everything off until you come in with a, your final plan.
You need to ask for continuance, I guess, anyway.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You need to ask for-
You have to ask for the continuance if you, if that's what you want.
Yeah, we, we would like for the continuance.
Okay. Get, get your homework done and set it up with Cheryl, no problem.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anything else?
Minutes, right?
The minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Schweney does? Who's the second on the minute?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond does? All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, prove them as changed. Prove them as changed, right.
Okay, yeah, the changes that were made.
Yeah, everybody saw the changes, right.
You have to vote it, right? Can we vote a question?
Yeah, I did, okay.
Question on it before you start voting.
Yes.
Cheryl. Um, we may, I, the broker, we can, we can try.
Well, the hollows, to be fair, we're, we're-
Didn't get it.
Yeah, okay, so we have to announce it so that we don't have to send that, we're activated, so it's not going to be next day.
No, it's still open.
Continue to the, your, what's the question?
Uh, June, um, 13.
Yes.
Yeah, June 13 is next day.
Yes, even though there's no, you're, I know, it's announced, told me that.
Does he, also, does he change the right hand?
Okay, so now it says- Mr. Mandel has something.
A question on the minutes?
Yes. Cheryl, on those additional minutes for our comments regarding, just the first two items. The third item was taken, that was taken out.
Third item was taken out.
Oh, okay, fine, thank you.
Okay. Motion to close the meeting. Who, you guys are all done or what?
I just, I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm, that we're, we're on for June 13, that this is continued to the June 13 plan.
Yeah, Cheryl takes care of that.
Yeah.
You have to announce it.
You have to formally announce it.
Okay, so you're going to come back June, June 13?
13, correct.
Okay.
That's it.
See you June 13.
Thank you. You have a great weekend.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We did that already. Oh, yeah, with your correction.
We didn't vote. We made a motion to approve them, and then we discussed, now we can vote. Now we, but you had to vote.
Okay. You made the most, Mr. Mandel made the most. All in favor? Aye. Posed? Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
May be adjourned. Mr. Schweney?
All in favor?
Aye.